Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to remind, I'd like to remind everyone, if you have one of these things, something electronic, if you just put it on vibrate or shut it off, just so it doesn't interfere with the meeting, because I'm hard of hearing with this many people in there, I might not hear everything. How about coming back on December the 3rd, our next meeting? Because all the people will be sworn in. I was gonna go on vacation, December the 1st. But what's gonna happen on December the 3rd is very important to this town, to the incoming council. Very important. That's the night they get sworn in to represent each and every one of us for four years. So if you can make it out on December the 3rd, I'm not going on vacation until the 4th. That's how important this is, I think, for everyone that's coming back. So if you can make it, December the 4th, haven't got a time, it's probably 6 o'clock too, I don't know for sure, this new council site. So these things, see on the 4th for sure, and at this time, I will declare the meeting open. And, uh, oh, we do have both youth members, welcome. So everyone's here, full compliment, compliment tonight. And, uh, I will ask for declaration of conflict of interest amongst council members. Thank you very much. Councilor Volks?
During the proceedings with the Integrity Commissioner tonight, I will be declaring a conflict of interest on that particular file.
Thank you, sir. Looking for the adoption of the published agenda, Councilor Bondi and Councilor Snively. Any questions? Additions? Okay. No additions, okay? All favor. That motion carries. Turn it over to Mr. O'Gee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 5.1, adoption of minutes, that the minutes of the regular council meeting, November 5th, be adopted as circulated.
Move by Councilor Rogers, supported by Councilor Birkman. Questions? On favor? That carries?
5.2, that the minutes of the special council meeting held November 6, 2018, be adopted as circulated.
Move by Councilor Bondi, supported by Deputy Mayor Malash. Questions? On favor? Carries?
5.3, that the minutes of the special council meeting of October 29th be adopted as circulated.
Move by Councilor Birkman, supported by Councilor Snively. Questions? On favor? That carries?
5.4, that the minutes of the special council meeting of April 23rd, 2018, be adopted as circulated.
Move by Councilor Birkman, supported by the mayor. Questions? On favor? Motion carries?
5.5, minutes of the consideration report meeting of October 15th for the 8th concession west drain be adopted as circulated.
Move by Councilor Rogers, supported by Deputy Mayor Malash. Questions, Councilor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of information, I was not there, and one of them, it did state that I wasn't, that I was.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Anything else? On favor? Motion carries?
And 5.6, that the minutes of the consideration report meeting of October 15th as well, held for the Bowler South Malden, South Malden Road Drain be adopted as circulated.
Move by Councilor Rogers, supported by Councilor Birkman. Questions? On favor? Carries?
Item 8 on the agenda, reports from administration, 8.1, that Community Services Report 2018-037, entitled 2018 Program Successes in Growth, Recreation, and Culture, be received for council information.
Move by Councilor Snively, supported by Deputy Mayor Malash. Questions, Councilor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a really good report that talks about the highs and lows of programming throughout our wards, throughout recent history. I really, really love our Director of Community Services to just give some highlights for the audience, just a little Kohl's Notes version of it, if he could.
Through your worship, actually, I'll defer to our Assistant Manager of Programming, Jason Joliker, who wrote the report, is on the programming.
Thank you, sir. Through your worship, the, um, we've seen some tremendous growth, and especially the Essex Center programs at the Essex Community Center, and now we are trying to boost programs in Colchester and Harrow, especially with the new community, uh, Colchester Community Center being opened, uh, and we are running programs there now as well. Um, we've seen a huge growth in birthday party packages as well, and that's part of the report. Um, and the biggest thing, the biggest thing to note there is, we keep listening to our participants, and we keep adding more and more options for them, and that seems to be working quite well. And the other big area of growth is our March Break, uh, Christmas and summer day camp programs, and that has, that has been going extremely well.
Thank you for that, Jason.
Mr. Shui?
Just add, I want to thank our staffing. If you notice throughout the report, they try to be unique, so we apply for a grant. We had spin class in the water, which was huge class, we had a major waiting list. They do escape rooms with Harry Potter themes, uh, roller skating this past year, so if residents have ideas, please bring it forward, because we're trying to be unique, because it's competition with other municipalities, but we're, we're seeing the fruits of our labor, so it's a lot to our staff, so I want to give them credit for that.
Thank you very much for that, sir. Anything else? On favor? Motion carries?
8.2, Community Services, 2018-038, re New Year's Town, New Year's Town Sponsored Events, for receipt, and that council support the town-sponsored New Year's events as noted in said report.
Move by Councilor Rogers, supported by Councilor Bondi. Questions? On favor? Motion carries?
8.3, Drainage Report, 2018-08, entitled Appointment of an Engineer, Relocation of Rush Drain for Essex Town Center Development, for receipt, and that council appoints Dillon Consulting, Consulting Limited to develop the said report for the Essex Town Center Development.
Move by Councilor Birkman, supported by Deputy Mayor Malash. Questions? On favor? That carries?
8.4, Planning Report, 2018-44, re 2275694, Ontario Inc., Site-Specific Rezoning for 1466 County Road 13, and this is together with Bylaw 1759 being a bylaw to amend the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw 1037, for receipt, and that council support or not support the site-specific rezoning, and if so, support it, that Bylaw 1759 receive three ratings this evening.
Just comment first.
Okay.
Just, just a discussion before we get the, uh, the motion, then we can only speak once, there may be a couple of things people want to say.
Things like this, you know, I go beyond one, once in a while, so, but probably this one will be one of the ones this evening. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I just want to speak to, uh, the zoning after lots of public dialogue and, uh, talking amongst ourselves and, uh, studying, I'm, I'm not in favor of, uh, changing this zoning. Um, I think we need to take into effect the, the wishes of our residents that are in that area. Uh, I'm not a person who is generally a "not in my backyard" person, but we have, we have to argue for something and back it up with, with facts. Right now, this area is zoned residential. It's been zoned residential, the people that have bought their houses around here have bought their houses believing they're buying property next to residential property. Um, we have property that's zoned for commercial, we have property that's zoned for commercial medical, and at great expense, uh, in the Calavino Sub, um, development. We have other properties that are in Harrow that could hold this. The biggest thing right now is, there is no business asking for this property for this zoning. Um, the owner of the property is looking to have the zoning changed, and then go out and search for, uh, somebody who would like to put in a, in a practice there. We've heard the argument that living out, uh, in Harrow, living in Colchester, we're very far away from any diagnostics, we're very far away from taking our parents, our loved ones, ourselves, uh, to get things done. The matter of fact is, if we change this zoning tomorrow, nobody's coming to Harrow to open up a diagnostic clinic or anything else. We now will have a property that is zoned that way without a business to fill it. Now, the proponent says that, uh, you need to have the zoning first in order to get people to get excited about it, but we know that a building or a business plan will direct you to where there are customers. And I think until we have a business that's prepared to go into that space, and they want to come back and look at that as zoning, that would be something we would need to look at. But right now, we're changing the zoning for if come, and what we're doing is putting the people that live around there, I think, uh, in, in negative pressures on themselves and on their property, so at this time, I would not be in favor of that.
Councilor Snively?
Through your worship, I understand the concerns of the neighbors, I met with the neighbors, uh, right adjacent to the property. Um, I don't want to see a stop to development, I think this ties in to what we have there. Um, they have concerns about the type of building that's gonna go in there, um, uh, their privacy, okay, it's gonna be violated, and we, we spoke for quite a long time last night on this issue, and, and they would, they would support it if there's recommendations putting in, put into place, but we haven't seen a plan. We haven't seen a plan from this doctor yet. We haven't seen what he's gonna put in there, he says he's going, you know, he's going to build a, a building there and have medical there, but we haven't really seen a plan from him. What is going in there? Now, we spoke, uh, on a pharmacy, we had, uh, I'm not gonna repeat it over and over, but we have two pharmacies in Harrow now. We don't need a third, and I think council agreed on that. But as far, I, I don't think the doctor's here tonight, but, uh, we haven't really seen a plan that come in front. All we hear is he's going to build something there and try, try to attract medical in there. We haven't seen a real plan. So to me, I won't support this tonight, okay? I want to see a plan come in front of us before, before I support anything like this. Well, thank you.
Councilor Volks?
Thank you, Chair. In terms of, in terms of this particular piece of development, I think it's relevant to this council moving forward, and especially the councils I see sitting in the audience. We strive every day for 15 years, when I see the mayor and Richard and myself sharing chairs, we strive for 15 years trying to get opportunities and discover opportunities to get people in, and to say that I don't see a plan should be a reason to stop is certainly not a reason. And also to say that, that a pharmacy, we don't need a pharmacy because there's two already, I don't care what the business is. It's not my responsibility to maintain the business. I'm a counselor, I don't run business. I, as a counselor, I look at opportunities to, to develop vacant, uh, lots for a taxable income. So I don't care if it's a pharmacy, I don't care if there's two there already, if that particular person wants to take the willingness to put the third one in, it's his money, not ours. It's our tax revenue, that's what's ours. So I would encourage council to move forward, irrelevant to the reasons what they're gonna put there. Don't challenge developers. Don't challenge developers. It's their responsibility, their money. We have rules and regulations that they, they follow, and to say to a developer, "I don't think your pharmacy is the way to go," is an insult to that particular person, because they got dreams and they got wishes, and we should work on helping them fulfill that. So I, I don't want to hear personally, myself, about it, and by the way, just for the record, council didn't support the fact that it was another pharmacy going in. That's not true. So anyways, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. Deputy Mayor Malash?
Thank you, through your worship. Um, I'm gonna echo very similar thoughts to, uh, a couple of opinions this evening. Uh, I too love to see investment coming to our town, we do, as Councilor Volks has suggested, uh, fight tremendously, uh, day in and day out, through a number of years, trying to get new businesses into the community. But where I feel this one's a little bit different is that we're changing the zoning right on the edge of a residential, uh, area, and I, I agree that we need more information on what's gonna happen there. I don't want to see just anything. Uh, residents are concerned about, uh, the amount of traffic that's gonna create, number of turns that are gonna happen right there in that section of the road. Um, maybe we need to look at the lanes too, if, you know, like, uh, left-hand turning lanes, if something's gonna go in there. But, uh, we, we don't have enough information at this point in time to change the zoning. Um, it's if we can get something there, uh, there's still lots of commercial available for other development, for development anywhere through the town. Um, let's use up some of the commercial development that we already have, uh, before we make a, a jump, uh, to changing this piece of property at this point in time. But, uh, you know, if Dr. Abraham can come back and be very specific and say, "This is exactly what we've got going in here, um, it's gonna fall in line with the, the nature of the neighborhood," then I can see changing perhaps at that point in time, but right now, um, I would say that we are not at that, in that position. And that's, that's the way I believe it is, anyway. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Snively?
Through your worship, um, in the meeting last night with this resident, I do have, and I didn't know Dr. Abram come in here, but I do have some concerns here, and, and the resident would work with the doctor if, if he come up with some of these. So if I could get this to the doctor and ask the doctor to meet with the Leport couple, Alice and Brad, and see if, if they can work something out with them, uh, then I think we could probably move forward. But, uh, I would like, I would like to give this to Dr. Abram, and, uh, and let him look at it, and come back and to council and see what he can do to, to, uh, please these, uh, these residents here. He's here, he just walked in. Yes.
Okay. We can give that to him after.
Okay.
But if, sir, if you're gonna go out, let us know, and we'll get it to you, okay? Okay, just before I ask for, what do you, how are you gonna deal with this for a motion? You heard me say, yes. The rule says you speak once to a motion. I had someone send me an email telling me a month ago, he wouldn't be here tonight. Wish he could have moved to Essex about six years ago, and it really struck me that, wow, this guy's pretty sharp, because he, he could read what I do at the meetings. Like I said, sometimes I do, sometimes I don't. This is what he said to me in his email. "I know what the rule of the law is, but I run the meeting by the spirit of the rule." Wow, I said to myself, boy, that guy, he can see great through me. So anyways, sometimes I do, sometimes I don't. But it's very important, I have the authority in this chair to do that, and it's more about the spirit of the rule than it is rule of the law. So we're looking now for a motion to see whatever, Councilor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just by knowing the personalities well here and seeing where it is, I almost feel that it's going to be a 4-3 or a 3-4, I think Mr. Mayor would probably be the swing vote, I'm not, I don't even know how on Rogers, that Councilor Rogers feels, but before we debate this for another hour and a half to get to that failed or passed by a 4-3, perhaps we could table it till December 17th, because I don't see us coming, I think there's still some unanswered questions. My one question before we table it would be to ask our planner, Rita Jabore, if tabling it is possible, because I know there's a 90-day window. Can you speak to that, please?
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair? Yes, tabling is possible. Okay, well, that, if, if I was able to make a motion, that would be my motion, that we just, we table it until December 17th, so that administration and the doctors and the neighbors can work through more concerns and see at that time, knowing that going forward, the new term of council will be dealing with this, with most of the candidates, if not all of them, the, the council elect are in the audience, knowing that at that point, five votes, right now it's a seven council members, uh, going forward it'll be eight, so five votes will be needed to pass that file then, so that's the little bit of the risk, but I honestly, uh, don't really feel it passing tonight, just my feel. So that would be my, my issue.
Make that motion.
Okay, motion to table it until December 17th.
Do we have a second, or? Councilor Snively seconded, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next topic. No discussion with tables. Hey, take it easy. Nobody's perfect in this room. Anyways, all favor that motion? Oppose? Motion carries? We're just waiting, the agenda dropped off our clerks, I bet. And I do have a joke that you're, no.
for receipt, and that council approve in principle the zoning bylaw recommended revisions as outlined in this report, and that council, or that council direct administration to bring a final report together with the proposed amending bylaw to the first regular meeting of council in January 2019, and finally, that council approve Essex Town Center Incorporated and its consultants to meet with administration to determine the distribution of dwelling unit types and total dwelling unit density over the entire subdivision in order to develop an updated development and servicing plan.
Move by Councilor Rogers, supported by Councilor Birkman. With comment, Councilor Birkman?
Thank you, through your worship, um, to, to both sides, I'd like to thank Mr. Valeni, uh, for, for meeting the wishes of the, the residents of the town, especially the ones that back onto Maidstone. We were looking at, they were, uh, worried about the, what was happening directly behind them, and to go to those 50-foot lots and keep them there is, is a great proposal, and then to our planning department for expanding their acceptance criteria. You know, there's, it's a dynamic change out there in the community. We're looking at communities that are growing, places that are building, we need to offer the things that those places are offering to bring people into our town. And we've had a narrower focus, I'll say, in the past, and we're now opening ourselves to different types of housing, uh, different densities of housing, and it's what we need to do moving forward. So thanks to our planning department and to the Valenies for, for meeting on this.
Thank you, Chair. All favor? Motion carries?
8.6, Clerks Report, 2018-17, re 2019 Regular Council Meeting Dates, for receipt, and that the regular meeting dates proposed therein be approved.
Move by Councilor Snively, supported by Councilor Bondi. With comment, Councilor Bondi? Okay. All favor? Motion carries?
Item 9, Any Reports From Our Youth Members This Evening?
No report for tonight.
You either, Ethan. Nice to see you both out here this evening. Thanks.
Item 10, Any Updates From County Council This Evening?
I do have one. At our last meeting two weeks ago, it was brought up about, uh, right-of-way cleanup cost recovery. I said I would bring it up at county council, and I did that, and, uh, after the discussion, the CEO, Mr. Masonville, said he would check in on behalf of all of us in the county from, from the county building to see what we could or couldn't get done with regards to this problem we have out here. So they're, they're working on it, and I'm sure he's gonna get back to Mrs. Hunter sooner, hopefully, than later. That's all I have from our last meeting. Thank you.
11.1 on the agenda, that the correspondence listed in agenda, item 11.1 be received?
Move by Councilor Bondi, supported by Deputy Mayor Malash. Any questions? On favor? That carries?
11.2.1, re November 19, 2018, report from the Office of the Integrity Commissioner, that said report be received or received and supported with adoption of the recommendation noted.
Point of order, I, I'm gonna ask that I be excused from the chair early until any discussions whether to receive or whatever, until I actually exit the chair and sat in the chambers.
Thank you. Councilor Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will, uh, make a motion to receive, receive only. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a second, or? Councilor Bondi seconded, uh, any discussion? I would like a recorded vote, please.
No other discussions, sir? Okay. On the motion to receive only the report of the Integrity Commissioner dated November 19th, 2018, Mayor McDorman, you've requested the recorded vote, how do you vote?
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, point of order, I didn't, I missed, missed the part where we got to speak to it.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry.
We'll go back there.
I'm not used to you asking for recorded votes, so that probably threw, I would like to speak to it, if I may.
You may.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that, I understand the basis of the report, and I read it from, uh, our Integrity Commissioner, Robert Swayze, which now we've spent more taxpayer dollars investigating this on a counselor who's no longer going to be here. After tonight, Counselor Randy Volks is going to walk out that door, and he's not going to sit there anymore. He still might sit there, but he's not going to sit here anymore, so it's kind of like, what is our aim, what is our goal, and, and why? Right? So, and in my head, I started thinking of why, and I, I have my context of what I've been through in eight years, and the Council Volks has been through the, here a lot longer. And I come back to the thing of, okay, yes, it's not right how, how you treat people, and I'm not making up excuses for how people are treated, definitely not, but sometimes there is, um, there's passion, and there is a little bit of, of anger, and a little bit of people being upset. The, the topic of this report, which is, it's an open file, anybody can see it on our council agenda, it's, it's to report an open session, so now we've raised it even more, where, where our CEO is upset about her wages being discussed, which is also on the sunshine list. Like, I can pull up the 2016-17 sunshine list and see what any employee makes. I actually have screenshots on here from 2016 where I have many of our directors, and it's all public knowledge, which I've also done some research on the sunshine list, and the sunshine list hasn't even been updated in 22 years, I believe.
Your point of order, sir? Yes, sir, your point of order, sir, is...
...whether you want to review this report, the information that's been presented to us or not, it's got nothing to do with, about why the CAO has presented, like, in oral words.
Okay. Now, to deal with your point of order, sir, and I will agree with you, that, Councilor Bondi, we're gonna just talk about why, okay? Instead of, okay, thank you very much.
My question just to council is, what do we have to gain here tonight? What do we have to gain here tonight by finding that Counselor Volks has, uh, you know, not followed the code of conduct with his actions and language? Sometimes it's hard to follow our code of conduct. Sometimes it's really hard, and I, I hope going forward that we can all work together, but I really, truly feel, and I know that my residents truly feel, that when you... But I really truly feel, and I know that my residents truly feel, that when you question things in the town of Essex, you get shit on. I believe that. I believe that with every 843 of my votes. So heaven forbid, I could be next, and he's walking out the door, so I'm not supporting this. And I urge council, because next time, it may be one of you questioning things. And I'm not saying that he was respectful to our CEO. I am sorry how he treated you. If that's how he treated you, I wasn't in this. I didn't I actually just read my agenda today. I didn't read it this weekend because I had a lot of other stuff going on. But we, tonight, we're having a retirement party for our mayor, and we're slapping the hand of somebody else who the information, the salary information is going to be public knowledge in eight months anyways. That's why I bang my head against the wall.
Okay, it's open for discussion. Anyone else? Well, there are a couple of questions in there, so I will speak. And you got a chance if you want to, because when I speak, that'll be the end of this. Okay? And then we're going to the vote. Okay, pass the chair. I'm okay. Deputy Mayor Malash, how about it? Thank you, sir. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if you want to proceed.
Okay. Now, I wasn't going to say a word tonight. I promised these people I wouldn't say a word. Councilor Bondi hadn't said a word. I wouldn't have said a word. But she asked a couple of questions. She made a couple of statements, again, that are false. False, yes. In April, this will be on the list, the sunshine list, which she made reference to. In April, not in August or September, that happened. Why? Why am I going to vote against just receiving this? I'll tell you now. I wasn't going to say a word before, but guess what? I was sworn in four years ago, and that this lasts until September the 30th. It lasts until September the 30th for each one of our council members. I'm getting paid to November the 30th. So when a decision comes down to me, it doesn't matter what it is. As long as I'm in office, I'm going to do my job. And that's what I feel I'm doing here. I didn't want to say this, but how can our new council come in and work with people that aren't going to finish their job, as far as I'm concerned? And I think I'm the only one that thinks like this.
Point of order. Yeah, we need to keep our conversation directed to the question.
Okay. Oh, yeah. You, yeah, that's and let me see the rest of yous that I know. I hope you come to my party anyways. So where was I? Well, that was the questions. You know, why? That's why I'm going to be voting against this. You know, she wants to know, why are we dealing with this? Because that's my job until November the 30th, come hell or high water. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mayor McDermott. I'll pass the gavel back to you. Chair's again.
Thank you, sir. So now we're looking for... We've got the motion. Yeah? Yeah, for sure.
Yep. On the motion to receive only the November 19 report of the Integrity Commissioner, Mr. Chair has requested a recorded vote. Mr. Mayor, how do you vote?
Oppose!
Deputy Mayor Malash?
In favor.
Counselor Bjorkman?
In favor.
Counselor Rogers? Counselor Snively? Counselor Bondi?
Support.
Support. With a vote of five in support and one opposed, the motion carries.
And Counselor Volkes, you may come back to your chair, sir. Thank you.
Item 12 on the agenda, committee meeting minutes. That the minutes in Agenda Item 12, together with any recommendations noted therein, be received and adopted as circulated.
Counselor Rogers moves. All of them, I take it? Ronald, yeah, thank you. Counselor Bjorkman supports. Any one of the four, anyone like to discuss? Okay? No? All in favor? That motion carries.
13.1, that the bank payments report for October 2018 be ratified as submitted.
Moved by Counselor Bondi, supported by Counselors Snively. Any questions? All in favor? That carries.
13.2, that the 2018 capital report, month ending September 30, 2018, be received.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Malash, supported by Counselor Bjorkman. Any questions? All in favor? That carries.
And 13.3, that the 2018 operating expense budget variance report by division for month ending September 30 be received.
Moved by Counselor Bjorkman, supported by Counselor Snively. Questions? All in favor? That carries.
15.1.1 on the agenda is a notice of motion that was originally presented at the November 5 regular council meeting and is being brought forward for consideration this evening. Counselor Volkes, that the town of Essex create a policy for accident cost recovery for local towing companies that includes towing, cleanup, and demerse, and that this policy be developed and presented within this term of council, as moved by Counselor Volkes and would require a secondar.
Counselor Rogers seconds. Counselor Volkes?
Thank you, Chair. I, you know, as the motion suggests, and I want to start the conversation over again, but it was just a policy to define cost recovery for towing companies. So I assume we're in the process of concluding that now?
Okay, so Counselor Volkes is looking for a policy. Any comments? Counselor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With his motion, unfortunately, I will be supporting it, but I don't think that we can get it presented within this term of council. And I don't know what that policy would look like. I do know that there's many pieces of this. For example, the county companies have talked to Mr. Nepsey. CBC did some coverage. The Mr. Mayor is working on it. I don't know. I think that we have to tweak your motion with a friendly amendment, and, you know, I don't know what it looks like. We have to continue the discussions. I'll tell you, Mr. Counselor Volkes, I'm not going to let it fall off the map for four years. I'm still here, right? You may be gone, but I'm still here. So I think we have to tweak your motion. There's definitely no way we can present it within this term of council.
Vote. Look at the reality is, in my 15-year term on council, out of all the files I dealt with, this was one of the only ones that wasn't sealed, signed, and delivered, or completely rejected. And that's why I raised it. If I can get this last file concluded as promissory by council, I'm content with that. As long as this council agrees to keep moving forward with it and meet the commitment of what they told those towing companies. And if you don't meet the commitment, and all due respect, I'll be out there. I'll be right there. Because we committed to it. And my question will simply be, why didn't we meet that commitment as promised? So I'll leave it at that. I look forward to administration, I look forward to administration council working on this, and hopefully, they can come up with something that meets the promissory by this current council. Thank you.
Okay, any other comment? All in favor of administration coming back to us with a policy, whether... Once they bring the policy back to us, I think then we can tweak what needs to be tweaked. I would think if, am I wrong with that? Mr. Rogers?
You would come back for council consideration.
Yes. To the next council. Exactly. By the time it got done, so... Counselor Bjorkman?
If we could just, if we can just take that, just speaking with Counselor Volkes, that the policy be developed and presented within the next term of council, we can change that. We can vote on it to agree to continue to keep it in front of us and act on it.
And allow us a new council, obviously, respectfully to them who aren't familiar with the files, to get educated on it and understand it before they endorse it.
So that friendly amendment, you're okay with, sir? Okay. Anything further? All in favor? Motion carries.
15.1.2 on the agenda has been deferred pending the legal review of a related matter. This matter is slated to return for council consideration at a later meeting.
Sir?
Item 15, or sorry, Mr. Chair. Item 16, reports and announcements from council members this evening.
Ronald, would you like to start your last gun announcements?
Not really an announcement. I just want to thank...
Excuse me. Before we get into the last thing, we're going to all have our chance to say our whatevers later on. This is just any announcement you have, but, okay. Okay. Counselor Snively, Counselor Bondi, Counselor Bjorkman, Counselor Volkes. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I just, I just want to kind of lay the groundwork or put the footings in if I could. We've been meeting, I see Suzanne Allison here, Monica Totten, and her husband Todd. We've been the early discussions of once again moving forward this year with the Essex Rock and Roll Car Show. It was an extremely successful event, and one of the reasons we do it, didn't do it this year is because it was really sitting on the heels of the election. We didn't think it would be fair to, as myself, who chaired that committee, to maybe what some people would assume me using leverage with the Essex Rock and Roll Car Show to... And maybe I should have. I could, maybe I keep my seat. But with all that being said is, so now we're back next year. And the thing with it, though, is we're doing it in conjunction with another committee that me and Suzanne and Monica set on, which is the Essex Business Expo. So in June of this year, we'll be coming, Suzanne is coming to council, I think, December 3 on another issue. And at the same time, she's going to be asking council, the new council, just so you know, to endorse the use of Heritage Park for that event. And the date in June is still outstanding, but it will be a June event. And I guarantee you, people, you think we put Essex on the map before? Tighten your belt up. It's going to be a fantastic show this year. Trust me. Trust me. We will have it no other way. So anyways, I just wanted to advise council of that, so.
So they all know, Counselor Volkes, December 3 is only for swearing in of the council. There'll be no business that date, so it would be the following meeting that you mentioned, okay? Would be the 17th. Okay? So 17th instead of the 3rd. That'd be, okay, thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to mention that the Essex good, regional good fellows had their paper drive this past weekend. Very successful campaign. Again, thank you to all the residents of Essex and all those who supported, took their time to come out and help out, the fire department, our fire department, all three stations, all the firefighters that were out there selling papers, and from very early in the morning until late at night, after dark. And on behalf of all the food banks that we have here in the town of Essex, they're very grateful that our firefighters were out there to help them. Thank you, good fellows. Secondly, I want to mention that the Harrow Christmas Parade is going to be on Friday, December the 1st. We do not have another meeting before that point in time, and I don't think, not sure if the mayor was going to mention that or not. Oh, he was, okay. But it's at 7 o'clock, and it starts at the countryside... Country Depot. But it'll go through the downtown, and it's going to finish at the Harrow Fairgrounds. Secondly, another Santa Claus opportunity for those that want to see Mr. Claus. Gesto Hay Ride is at 11 o'clock Saturday, December the 1st, at Colchester North Public School it will start. And I can guarantee you Santa will be there. But if you want to go on a hayride, as long as it's not raining, it's usually a pretty good time. And, Mr. Mayor, I think that's, no, I'm going to mention the Essex Parade as well, unless you're going to mention it.
I wasn't going to. I was going to let Mr. Sweet do that on behalf of the town. But you can go ahead, and you saved his life.
Essex Parade is going to happen on December the 8th. Starts at 7 o'clock.
6:30 PM.
Okay, starts at 6:30 PM, sorry. And it's going to start at the arena and head north, in my senses, anyway, directional senses. Anyway, those are the Christmas events that I wanted to plug before, before we got to our next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, we are moving ahead. Oh, yes, Counselor Bjorkman would like to...
Sorry, the Christmas announcements reminded me that the town of Essex Christmas tree lighting will be November 23rd from 6 till 9. And there won't be carriage rides this year, but another chance for Santa to be in town. So that is put on by the BIA, and it's also the Salvation Army Kettle Kickoff. So that's November 23rd from 6 till 9.
Thank you for that, sir.
Item 17, bylaws. 1756, to confirm the proceedings of the November 5 regular council meeting for third reading this evening.
Moved by Counselor Bondi, supported by Counselor Rogers. Any questions? All in favor? That carries.
Bylaw 1761, to appoint a deputy chief administrative officer for three readings this evening.
Moved by Counselor Bjorkman, supported by Deputy Mayor Malash. Questions? All in favor? That carries.
And 1760, to confirm the proceedings of the November 19 regular council meeting.
Moved by Counselor Snively, supported by Counselor Bjorkman. Any questions? All in favor? That carries.
And now, Mr. Mayor, I believe you have some presentations?
Yes, I do. These are the good parts of these meetings. Not the best time of the year to do it, but it's a good job. You want me to use this one? Even when I thought of Randy's daughter, you know? Is this is our last council meeting? I'd like to take a few moments to say thank you to everyone one around this table, and those who worked hard behind the scenes to move our community forward. And not only these people here, these six, the four terms, Councilor Vogts, Deputy Mayor Malasch, myself, that's four terms that we worked with a different group of people, twice with Ron, you know? We all did a great job for the Town of Essex, you know? We all have the Town of Essex right here, right here, believe me. To my fellow councilors, it has been an honor and pleasure to work alongside you during this term and all the terms before that. Together with administration, we've accomplished a lot, a lot, in these past years. From infrastructure investments, which have helped our town grow, to new facilities, which make our municipality a better place to live, the work we have done will serve the community well into the future. I can be confident in saying that the citizens in all four urban centers and all the rural areas in between have been served well by this council and previous councils. While we may not have always agreed on everything, we have fought for what we believe is right, and I urge you to maintain that same goal. And to you incoming council members, remember that. Fight what you think is right, but my dad told me a lot of years ago, when you vote yes and the vote goes no, cross that floor and make that yes vote or the other people's vote work. You gotta help it make it work. Like if it's five and two, and you're two, get over there and be part of that seven. That's what'll move us ahead. To administration, and we've got a few of them here, most of them, even some of the hard-working people I see tonight, not that you people don't, you never stop, but I mean the foot warriors, you know? To administration, thank you for helping to make council's vision a reality. In spite of what some people say, we make the decisions. While we work to make the decisions, we, the council, you make those decisions work. You got that, eh? They make our decisions work. You've brought a vast amount of knowledge, expertise, and a similar community-oriented approach to all you do. I know you will continue that hard work, all of you, I know you will, 'cause you love Essex. You put up with a lot in the past, and you're still here. That, we all want to thank you for. And keep working hard for that next council, and all those who come after it, because some of you are pretty young, really young in fact. Donna Hunter, our C.E.O., I was just a guy that hung around the pool room, the Legion, when Donna came to town. Alls I know is Wayne Miller did a lot of jobs in this town. Thank you, Wayne, wherever you are. We brought in a clerk, no, treasurer, and it was Donna Hunter from Wawa. Anybody know where Wawa is? Wow, you know? Wayne Miller tried to do, and I say tried to do, the treasurer's job along with the C.E.O. job and everything else he was trying to do in town, you know? And when Donna got here, I don't know if it took her two or three years to straighten our books out, the town treasury books, you know? She got it done, and she graduated from there to our C.E.O. You know, wow, she's the boss of all them people. You know, we come to her, she answers to us, not them other people, they all answer to Donna. Donna, thank you very much. And I'm gonna say it was twenty years ago, nineteen, how many, twenty-three?
Almost seventeen.
Almost seventeen, wow, I'm way off. Time flies by when you're having fun. Okay. Next, I'd like to recognize the two outgoing council members. Councilor Rogers, you demonstrated a dedication to your community that is hard to match. Through your work around the council table, through your many volunteer efforts, you've been dedicate, your, you bring dedication, common sense, and smarts to our community and council table. You have been a dedicated advocate for the Colchester area, and our council has been stronger because of you. I trust you will continue to serve the community, and I look forward to seeing your future accomplishments. On behalf of the Town of Essex and to recognize your accomplishments and council, we have made that two hundred and fifty dollar donation in your name to Access Community Support Services. And that was the organization of his choice. So, thank you very much, Councilor Rogers. And Councilor Vogts, back to you again, sir. Councilor Vogts, I know we've not always gotten along, but I do believe we have at least one thing in common, and that's a passion for our community and doing what is best for its citizen. You're always willing to stand up for the little guy, and I commend you for never backing down from what you believe is right. I have no doubt you will continue to serve your community long after your time at the council table, as you've already told us about. On behalf of the Town of Essex and to recognize your accomplishments and council, we have made a two hundred and fifty dollar donation in your name to the Arthritis Society of Canada, the organization of your choice. Randy, congratulations. Is there more? Is there more?
We're gonna go around.
Okay, now you get your chance. We all get our chance, a seven. I'm gonna start with Deputy Mayor Malasch, he's been here the longest, and Councilor Vogts right behind him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not gonna say much. Um, I'm gonna say thank you to the residents of Essex. This was the first time where we had deputy mayor voted at large, and I appreciate the fact that I was able to come back in that position. Looking forward to working very hard for the residents of Essex along with this wonderful crew that's coming back to the Town of Essex. I think you're gonna be pleasantly surprised at what we, what we're gonna try to achieve over the next four years, and, uh, hope everyone has a wonderful Christmas, and don't know if we're gonna get a chance to, oh, maybe we'll get a chance to say that in one of our future meetings, but I'm gonna wish everybody a Christmas while they're listening to me right now. Thank you.
Sure. Councilor Vogts?
Thank you, Chair. Well, first of all, I certainly want to take the opportunity to thank the residents of the Town of Essex Administration and Council for making the kind donation of two hundred and fifty dollars to the Arthritis Society in memory and in name of my daughter. And I want it to be known that, um, if you can, from my last council pay, I will match that donation going to the Arthritis Society, and hence we'll be sending five hundred dollars, but my, my appreciation for that, that donation is not explainable by words. I, I want to mention this, I want to get off what we do here in council. If anybody's been listening to the news, in terms of politics and what politicians do and how they challenge one another every day, there was a fine gentleman by the name of Mr. Eddie Francis, unfortunately lost his beautiful wife, Michelle Prince, to a long courageous battle in cancer. And I wouldn't feel good in concluding tonight my political legacy if I could ask the chair and I could ask the administration with the people here before us on behalf of Mr. Francis and his beautiful wife, if we could stand and recognize thirty minutes of silence in her memory, because it's, or thirty seconds, I'm sorry, thirty seconds in her memory, because as politicians, that's what we do. We recognize one another, we appreciate one another, and though we have our differences, at the end of the day, we respect one another. So I'm asking that the council, the Town of Essex and Essex Administration, please take thirty seconds and stand and recognize Eddie Francis's wife, Michelle Prince.
Well, you can do that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Well, first of all, I certainly want to take the opportunity to thank the residents of the Town of Essex Administration and Council for making the kind donation of two hundred and fifty dollars to the Arthritis Society in memory and in name of my daughter. And I want it to be known that, um, if you can, from my last council pay, I will match that donation going to the Arthritis Society, and hence we'll be sending five hundred dollars, but my, my appreciation for that, that donation is not explainable by words. I, I want to mention this, I want to get off what we do here in council. If anybody's been listening to the news, in terms of politics and what politicians do and how they challenge one another every day, there was a fine gentleman by the name of Mr. Eddie Francis, unfortunately lost his beautiful wife, Michelle Prince, to a long courageous battle in cancer. And I wouldn't feel good in concluding tonight my political legacy if I could ask the chair and I could ask the administration with the people here before us on behalf of Mr. Francis and his beautiful wife, if we could stand and recognize thirty minutes of silence in her memory, because it's, or thirty seconds, I'm sorry, thirty seconds in her memory, because as politicians, that's what we do. We recognize one another, we appreciate one another, and though we have our differences, at the end of the day, we respect one another. So I'm asking that the council, the Town of Essex and Essex Administration, please take thirty seconds and stand and recognize Eddie Francis's wife, Michelle Prince.
Well, you can do that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Welcome, sir.
So, and, and, and thank you, everybody, for, for doing that. Look, in, in wrapping up, it's obvious that it's, it's been a certainly challenging ride in, in, in my political career, but at the very least, very interesting. So, and I'm not gonna, I'm not going to, to carry on, but I certainly want to thank, I want to thank administration, I want to thank council, I obviously want to thank my very good and closest friend, Councilor Sherri Bondi. I actually, when Sherri first become a counselor, I thought, gee, she's gonna, I, I hope she learns from me, I, I hope I can kinda, kinda, and actually, the truth is, people, in the latter years of my career, I learned from her. I learned every day from her. She called me up, she go, Randy, you don't get it. I go, Sherri, what are you talking about? And she would take a half hour of my miserable life and straighten me up. And, and I can tell you, her endeavors in doing that helped me here, 'cause I don't know where it would've went without her haunting me in the background. But I'm gonna close with this. This weekend, at Chapters, Michelle Obama's got a book out, I don't know if you know or not, it's called Becoming. You may not believe this, but I'm gonna be there this weekend with Michelle Obama at Chapters in Windsor. We're both doing a book signing, hers is Becoming and mine's Be Going. So, so if you get a chance, come out, sign the book. But, but I want to tell you this, I want to tell you this, when I thank administration, I thank council, they, they, they work hard at that. But really, people, and you need to understand this, I look around the room, I see Robin Hall, I see Lynn Maraz, I see Sarah Gerard, I see the grassroots people of the corporation of Town of Essex every day who work harder and help to make our jobs easy. I just went in and said goodbye to them today. I wouldn't have been nothing without them, nothing, because they're the people that when you're, as an elected representative, when you need a little help in doing something, they always seem to rise to the occasion some way, somehow. And it makes us all who that we are, so to Robin, to Lynn, to Sarah, and to all the staff of the Town of Essex, my hat's off to you, and I thank you very much for that. So, again, thank you for the time to speak, people.
Councilor Burkman?
Thank you, worship. Um, I'd like to first thank the, the residents of Essex Center for voting for me and electing me in the last election. I've enjoyed the four years of being here and representing you and working for you. And then I'd like to thank the residents of, of Colchester North, or Colchester South, I used to live in Colchester North, Colchester South, for electing me in this next election. I'm looking forward to the challenge of being out there. And then I'd like to thank this council and administration, this was my first time in politics, and I got to play the rookie card for the first year, and then they told me that's enough, you know what you're supposed to do, get to work. And it was great, it's been a great learning experience for me, I've had a lot of people help me through administration and this council. And in particular, I'd like to thank Tout, the mayor, for a lot of guidance, a lot of talking to me and, and teaching me about what a counselor needs to do. And I'd like to thank Randy for sitting beside me and every now and then telling me what to do. And, and the rest of our council, and to Ron and to Randy and Tout, I wish you all the best in, in what you do next, and to our next council that's coming up, I'm very excited about it. I think we've got a great group coming together, and we'll continue the work of this council, so thank you very much.
Councilor Rogers?
It's gonna be hard to, you know, outdo these guys with, with what they've been saying, but I, I too want to thank all of the administration and staff for all the help and guidance and they've, they've given, given me over the, over this past year and in, in the previous years. As well as, I'd like to, I want to thank the residents of, of the Town of Essex for, for allowing me to, uh, spend this past year and, and in previous years, uh, at this seat and, and helping grow our town. I wish everyone the best, and I wish everyone a, a great holiday season and Merry Christmas. And thank you again for allowing me to be here.
Councilor Snively fell asleep there.
Thank you, worship. First of all, I would really want to thank all the residents of the Town of Essex for voting me in as your new mayor. We do have an excellent council coming in and presently what's here now. I want to thank Councilor Vogts and Councilor Rogers all the best, and please stay involved with our community, I'm sure you will. And to you, Tout, you've been a great mayor, a great friend, and a great leader for this town, and you're gonna be missed, you really will. Thank you.
Councilor Bondi, you won't be alone next term. You're gonna have company. Another lady, all right.
Yes, that, that is exciting to have another woman on council, because I've been the youngest and the only woman for two terms now, and Joan Flood was the last woman, female counselor on Essex Council, so I welcome Ms. Verbeek, but sometimes it's okay to stand alone. You know, I don't always stay in my lane, I don't always, I don't always, right? I don't always, um, I'm not always on the same page, but that's okay, because I get my message from the people out there, and I'm prepared to stand alone, I would, I would love to work together on issues. My job in the next four years is to bring issues to council with public support and facts.
But really, people, and you need to understand this, I look around the room, I see Robin Hall, I see Lynn Maras, I see Sarah Gerard, I see the grassroots people of the Corporation of Town of Essex every day who work harder and help to make our jobs easy. I just went in and said goodbye to them today. I wouldn't have been nothing without them, nothing, because they're the people that when you're, as an elected representative, when you need a little help in doing something, they always seem to rise to the occasion some way, somehow. And it makes us all who that we are. So to Robin, to Lynn, to Sarah, and to all the staff of the town of Essex, my hat's off to you, and I thank you very much for that. So again, thank you for the time to speak, people.
Country Burden.
Thank you, worship. I'd like to first thank the residents of Essex Center for voting for me and electing me in the last election. I've enjoyed the four years of being here and representing you and working for you. And then I'd like to thank the residents of Colchester North, or Colchester South, I used to live in Colchester North, Colchester South, for electing me in this next election. I'm looking forward to the challenge of being out there. And then I'd like to thank this council and administration, this was my first time in politics, and I got to play the rookie card for the first year, and then they told me, that's enough, you know what you're supposed to do, get to work. And it was great, it's been a great learning experience for me, I've had a lot of people help me through administration and this council. And in particular, I'd like to thank Tout, the mayor, for a lot of guidance, a lot of talking to me and teaching me about what a councillor needs to do. And I'd like to thank Randy for sitting beside me and every now and then telling me what to do. And the rest of our council, and to Ron and to Randy and Tout, I wish you all the best in what you do next, and to our next council that's coming up, I'm very excited about it. I think we've got a great group coming together, and we'll continue the work of this council. So, thank you very much.
Councilor Rogers.
It's going to be hard to outdo these guys with what they've been saying, but I too want to thank all of the administration and staff for all the help and guidance that they've given me over this past year and in the previous years, as well as I'd like to, I want to thank the residents of the town of Essex for allowing me to spend this past year and in the previous years at this seat and helping grow our town. I wish everyone the best, and I wish everyone a great holiday season and Merry Christmas. And thank you again for allowing me to be here.
Counselor Snigley fell asleep there.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, I would really want to thank all the residents of the town of Essex for voting me in as your new mayor. We do have an excellent council coming in and presently what's here now. I want to thank Councilor Vogts and Councilor Rogers all the best, and please stay involved with our community, I'm sure you will. And to you, Tout, you've been a great mayor, a great friend, and a great leader for this town, and you're going to be missed, you really will.
Councilor Bondi, you won't be alone next term.
Oh.
You're going to have company. Another lady, all right.
Yes, that is exciting to have another woman on council, because I've been the youngest and the only woman for two terms now, and Joan Flood was the last woman, female councillor on Essex Council, so I welcome Ms. Verbeek, but sometimes it's okay to stand alone. You know, I don't always stay in my lane, I don't always, I don't always, right, I don't always, I'm not always on the same page, but that's okay, because I get my message from the people out there, and I'm prepared to stand alone, I would love to work together on issues. My job in the next four years is to bring issues to council with public support and facts, and take it or leave it, that's how they're going to be, right? I think we do have some challenges ahead in terms of the provincial government, the four majority governments, majority governments are always scary, but I think we're going to have some differences in terms of grant monies we get, and we might have to tighten our purse strings a bit, and I think that'll be challenging for us. We sit here tonight because of democracy, and we sit here because we need to make sure democracy continues to work. I'm glad a whole bunch of people showed up tonight for our last council meeting, but it's good if you show up all the time. Don't just show up once every four years, show up as much as you can, because we work for you, and when we see you here, it helps us do our job, because you're paying attention to what you're doing. Our agendas are online, our committee minutes are online. If you have a hard time navigating something, where the minutes are or where an agenda is, let us know, we need that feedback so that we can work for you. I'm always accessible, social media, I am on social media. This was an extremely challenging election, I believe I'm the only one probably in Essex County that had an election with a breastfed baby, which, I mean, I know that's a little too much information, but that's the reality of having, you know, young women on council, and I'm not even that young, but it was extremely challenging in many facets, but I'm here, and I'm here to work for you along with the rest of council, and I'm super excited to see what we really can do. We have done a lot, actually, we've done a lot of really good things, it's kind of got overshadowed, but I'm really proud of some of the things that we have done. Now, council will get sworn in, we'll do a strategic planning session, so if you have feedback, if you have ideas for your councillors, for your deputy mayor, elected at large, love it, because now you have a deputy mayor, that's all to you, he's not a ward rep too. So, let your councillors know, let your deputy mayor know. To me, you can never give me too much information, too much feedback, because it makes our job easier when I can say, you know, I'm hearing this, I'm hearing that on these files, right? And if we have to table something to make it work, that's our job, to table something to make it work. So anyways, I'll leave it at that, everybody knows how to reach me, and let's move forward. My book's going to be called, I'm a Stan.
Wow, six of yous only took 15 minutes, I think. I said, gee, are we going to get out of here by eight? I expected more from you people. Gives me a lot of time now, doesn't it? But anyways, and that's all my family, look at them out there. First of all, I wanted to recognize a few people in the audience. We have the warden and his wife, Brenda. Tom, get up, please. Always a pleasure to see you, sir, and you too, young lady. And Tom is retiring from the warden's chair, but he got a claim, so he'll be back for years 41, 42, 43, and 44 in politics. Wow, I couldn't dream of that. Way to go, Tom. And there's a few other people here, I saw a couple former council members, Bill Baker, Peter Timmons with his wife, Teresa, have a wave, so they know who the heck you people I'll get back to Bill, I skipped him on purpose. Is there anyone over here? Any former council members? I didn't see any, I don't think. But, yeah, we have, I know, we got Billy. Pat, I'll talk louder. But anyways.
Marley, Paul.
I know, I'm coming. We got Billy Caxero here, he's been here three or four times in the last year to get his name tag. And while I'm, and I lost it at one time, and then when I have it, he's not here, when he's here, I don't have it. So, at this time, I'm going to give this to Bill on the way out, and that Phil, wave. See that Portuguese shirt? And to Ron and Larry, take this, so the next incoming mayor, Larry or somebody, he doesn't lose it, take it home with you, you get to keep these things. And we also have Marley Bowman, who's a former, but he's going to stand up with everyone that got re-elected, or got elected, I should say. Come on, Chris, Marley, I saw Joe, and him. Lot of youth there. I'm not talking about you, Marley, I'm talking about the rest of us. But anyways, to everyone, that's, put your name in there, that's something, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of work that you're prepared to do on behalf of our municipality. And thank each and every one of you, and if you come back, good luck the next time, and there's always the next time. I got a little story here. I didn't know what shirt to wear, or what tie to wear. I wore my music one. Some of you might know that I'm a barber shopper. I'm not a very good singer, but I like to sing. 15 years ago, like December the 3rd, which is going to happen with a lot of these people, is a swearing in, the swearing in of the new council. 15 years ago, we're all set to go, somebody said, hey, I saw four guys singing out there, they must be going to come in and sing the National Anthem, a quartet. Wow, that'll be really nice, really good, barber shoppers. So the four guys walked in, then locked the door, another one walked in, then another one walked in, and here comes a whole line of them, the whole frickin' chapter, you know, our whole group of guys, 40, whatever there were. Uh-oh, here comes some relatives from the States, late but not forgotten. But anyways, you know, so I said, what tie? That's why I have this one on, to remember what happened 15 years ago. So you people, like I said earlier, that are going to be sworn in, December the 3rd, remember that day. That's why it is so important for all of us to be there, to support these people as they get sworn in. Like it meant really something to me, I haven't forgot, and I'm sure these people won't forget it either. Now, my families, most of them, if not all of them, are there. My biggest sister, my oldest sister, Pat, thank you very much for coming, she made all of the rest of these kids and grandkids come. What are the great-grandkids? I told my grandkids, get them here too. Yeah, sleeping. But Pat, thank you for all of your advice, you know, I sure appreciate it. Her husband was a former mayor of Essex, who I learned a little bit from, but boy, did I ever teach him a lot. He said, when I was the mayor, yeah, there were 4,000 people in town, you know, and boy, did I clue him in. But thanks to my family for all they had to put up with in the last 15 years. Get back to my sweetheart. First term, wow, I got to be mayor. Now come the fall, you know, you got to put your name in. My wife's got cancer for the second time. Nope, I'm staying home. Staying home with the aunt, who knows how long it's going to be? She went from uterine cancer, licking it, five years later, she got breast cancer, no, lung cancer. Nope, I'm staying home. No, you got to run. No, I don't have to. Anyways, we, one of the few arguments we had, she won. You know, like, how long am I going to be here? You got another four years if you get elected. Thanks to Gladdy, I'm still here, you know, without her pushing me, I don't even know if I'd be alive today when I met her way back in 55, you know, at high school. The family, you know, you mean a lot. If we're not family, and we're all family, I think of all of us here as a family, even your administration, you know that, you hear that, not every day, but it should be every day, you know that, and you quit your tears coming down your cheek, having hard enough trouble. But especially you people, okay? And to my supporters, even the people that didn't support me, my first number one goal when I got elected was, I don't know if anybody remember, I know my family probably remembers, because I've told them many times, it was right after amalgamation, that was Joan Flood, my old school buddy, Joan Flood, you know, amalgamation, nobody wanted it, a lot of us still don't want it. But my number one thing was, bring this municipality together, you know, we're going to be one community. And I think, as councils, we've done a pretty good job of doing that in the last four terms. We've done a great job, I wouldn't say we're 100%, but boy, we're well over the 90% mark, where we've accomplished what I really wanted to do, you know, and that was to be one municipality. We've got four wards, but there will always be a hero, and I said that after amalgamation, and I wasn't even involved then. There'll always be a guesto, you know, there'll always be a, where are you, Tom? You know, Ruscombe? You know, that's not Lake Shore, it's Ruscombe, you know, Albionna, there'll always be an Albionna. But, we're one, like we all one. The big guy said, we're all brothers and sisters. We're all brothers and sisters. So very Merry Christmas to everyone, I'm not going to make that last thing, somebody else is, I think Donna wants the four after me. Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year, and God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to remind everybody that we're hosting a reception for the mayor in recognition of his retirement from politics, and we're hoping that all can join, it's being held at the Shaheen Room over at the Essex Sports Complex, and it starts at 8 o'clock tonight.
And my family wants to meet every one of yous, okay? Look at them, look at them, they're just chomping, waiting for you to get there. Okay, I need to get an adjournment, may I? I'm of adjournment, supported by Councilor Vogts, nobody better, right, Randy? Okay, anybody opposed to that? Motion carries, voted. Thank you all for coming and have a great evening, okay? Remember, you got to drive home.